Session, a regular session at seven oh two, uh, no reports out from closed session. Item G Pledge of Allegiance, uh, Amy Godet will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Um, no, it's fine.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God. The visible liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda.
Second, have a first and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And Chair vote side, item passes four oh. Seeing approval of the minutes, uh, consideration of approving the minutes of the regular meeting of February twenty eighth, twenty twenty three.
I move to approve the minutes.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
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 And the Chair vote side passes four oh, uh, governing board and superintendent announcements. Sue Sullivan.
Thank you. So I just want to take a moment to share out that I attended a celebration of life for little PJ or student at Stevenson Ranch Elementary. And uh, it was so emotional, I can beyond words. So what I'd like to do right now is just to take a moment to honor PJ with a, a moment of silence. Thank you. That's it for me.
Well, I'll share a few things that transpired for me over the last week. Um, I did visit Valencia Valley Elementary School with, uh, Sue and Dr. Hernandez. Also visit the Oak Hills Elementary School. And I'm, uh, recruiting their fields for soccer, by the way. Um, then Friday I went on a really fast trip around the world. At Stevenson Ranch, this is, uh, the flag of Colombia. And I have my passport filled in. I've visited all the, uh, booths and had some, um, you know, ethnic foods from various countries. It was really well attended and it was a scare because of, you know, the COVID mentioned. But it, it pulled off in the end and it was very fun. A lot of people even in the rain showed up. So that was great. Um, and then also I had mentioned the last meeting about the Child and Family Center. This is a really good resource. I see the counselors, our, our parents need to know about this. And I, I know Sue and Dr. Hernandez were there as well. We took a tour of the facility. And they have, um, you know, resources for little kids up through teens dealing with drugs and mental issues and, uh, supporting the family. So, um, we have to promote that. And then, um, lastly, I wanna say it's gonna come up. And I don't know, should I talk about it now or when it comes up? When it comes up? When it comes up. I'll talk about when it comes up. Um, and then also today I was on a legislative Zoom with, uh, Pilar Chavell. And, um, we're, she's encouraging us uh, to bring bills or ideals for bills to support education and support our students here. So whatever you're thinking about, share it and we'll get it on that bill, bill list. Thank you.
Dr. Hernandez?
Uh, I would just like to thank the Stevenson's Ranch community for showing their resilience and their support. Um, they've been going through some difficult times these last couple of weeks and they have been very supportive. I also wanna definitely send a big thank you to Principal Stendruse for leading her school through such difficult times. And just being there for all of the parents and the students.
All right, then with the announcements, item K, public comments. Uh, any citizen may address the board on items of interest to the public that are within the jurisdiction of the board. No action will be taken on any item not appearing on the agenda. All public comments submitted can no longer be no longer than two minutes in length and total allotted time for the public comments on any item. No more than twenty minutes, uh, per governing board protocols. Time cannot be yielded. Um, any public comment? Nope. All right, public interest? None? All right, um, we're to the consent calendar. Unless any board member has a question concerning a particular item and asks that that item be withdrawn from the consent calendar. The items are approved at one time by the governing board. The action taken by the board in approving the consent item is, uh, set forth in the explanation of individual items. Do we have any changes or any item needs to be removed from the consent calendar?
No, but I, I would just like to say thank you to all of the parent organizations.
Yeah, the gift report, right?
With it, yeah, the gift report, outstanding support for field trips and materials and supplies. So thank you to Peachland, PTA, Pico Canyon, Old Orchard Foundation, New Hall PTA and Oak Hills PTA for all of their support.
Right, uh, entertaining, um, motion to approve the consent calendar.
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Second, are we over first and second? Uh, it'll be a roll call vote, uh, Donna Robert.
Aye.
Sue Solomon.
Aye.
Isaiah Tally.
Aye.
And the Chair vote side passes four oh, uh, staff reports administrative services. Um, consideration of approving Valencia Valley Elementary fifth grade field trip to Dodger Stadium.
So I would like to share that I dug, how do you say, dove in? On that.
Deep dive.
A deep dive and you know, math is my passion. I love the activities that the kids are gonna be involved with. Because I think when you bring math to real world and fun things, it hits home with them. So, um, the teachers of the grade levels will have access to these activities. And I just think it's so fantastic. Whatever the dollars are, I motion to approve.
Second.
All right, um, I guess we have a first and second, um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the Chair vote side passes four oh.
I think it's also great, give children an opportunity who might not otherwise have an opportunity to go to Dodger Stadium and and see a, any portion of a game live too. So I think that's a, that's also a great experience.
Yeah, my favorite subject is math, so, um.
You're into stats?
No, just, just like it's sometimes in school, math is so theoretical. And actually seeing that, that math is all around us. It's a, a big deal, especially when you're a kid. Uh, it's not just something you just do at school. It's like all around you, so.
That's, that's, I wish I had that approach when I went to school.
I should have been her teacher. We, we did a little math in our closed session, actually.
So let me just publicly thank Ms. Roberta for bringing in some little geometric pie mathematical problems to solve with an actual pie to eat, so.
You're welcome.
All right, um, agenda, um, staff report one, Romanet two, uh, discussion will continue to hold a virtual option for governing board meetings.
So I, I wanted to bring this up again, just because, um, I think it's really important for us to discuss this. To see whether or not we want to continue the Zoom meetings. So I did do some research and through the research just of the neighboring districts, two out of the five do hold meetings where they are either on Zoom or they're on the YouTube channel. And, uh, the others, the other three are us, take us out of it, the other two do not. Also, I asked who would, who runs the meetings and how are they run? And of those two districts, so they do have personnel that runs the district, that runs the meeting. So it could be a Director of Technology or an Assistant Soup, um, while they're doing up, while they're up at the dais are actually helping as well. So that, I know that's been a discussion for us is who would continue to run the, the meetings, um, without having to take notes or do anything else. And I think that's really the point right there. And, um, even though we do have it, you know, all of us could support the Zoom meetings, it's actually running the meetings that is probably the part that we actually wanna see if we wanna continue. So I wanna just read some numbers so that you could see how many of our, how many people actually attend the Zoom meetings. So in December sixth of twenty twenty two, we had nine participants. In, uh, December thirteenth, twenty twenty two, and that was the night that we had our new board members join us. And that was thirty participants. On January the tenth, nine participants. January the twenty fourth, three participants. February fourteenth, ten participants, and February the twenty eighth, eleven participants. So I guess we're not in the twenties, we're not in the thirties, um, you know, so I think that's a, a point that I just, I mean, either way, i- is it enough? I don't know. That's why I'm bringing it to you to see if that's something that we want to continue. And if we do wanna continue, then I think maybe we look at it in a different way where we do start looking at it as a position or hiring personnel. How could we do that? Um, I think last time you did ask me as well to research if we paid somebody extra time. We did figure it would be probably about six hundred dollars a month extra if it was one of our employees and we paid them extra time. So probably at three hundred dollars, uh, could be like three hundred dollars only with everything included for, for the four hours if needed. So I guess I wanna leave it for discussion. I wanna give you those facts and then leave it for discussion.
Well, one thing I'm gonna say is that number thirty on the thirteenth is probably because it was promoted uh, between the new board members. And, uh, it was interesting that one for specific reasons. Um, my concern is that if we don't offer a virtual option, you know, it precludes a lot of people. I know right now we don't have a lot of, you know, participation. But I wonder if that's because people aren't aware that it's a option. Um, I know we enhanced the website to put Agenda, what Agenda as a link. So it'd be easier to get to, so, um, I mean, I re- I recall there is a parent square and there is, uh, the principals who can do robo calls and things like that to announce when we're having board meetings. So just curious to see how many parents would do Zoom or even show up here in person if they were more interested in certain items or topics that were gonna be covered on this particular day. As opposed to not giving them the option at all. I'm just curious.
So I was a big proponent of having, uh, having our community have access to our board meetings, which I still think it's important that they do have access. And I, I understand, you know, the concern that we have Rosanna doing it, the executive assistant, because she fiddles back and forth between taking minutes and that. I do, I do totally understand that part of it. So I thought too, when we were exploring this at the end of the massive COVID uh, period, when we were coming back to some normalcy of in school, that there would have been a huge gusto of support to say, uh, yes, school board, please continue these meetings. And honestly, I, I got, I have to say like no emails about it. And so, but that doesn't mean people aren't interested either. It, and, and by that too, we typically don't get a lot of community attending our meetings. Traditionally, prior to COVID. But even with COVID, because it affected everybody, people tend to come to meetings when there's an agenda item that speaks to their needs. Such as attendance boundary changes, closing a school. Um, you know, perhaps moving teachers, their favorite teacher from one school to another. So there's those kinds of topics that will draw people to come and say, hey, this is important. It doesn't say to me, because they're not here, they don't care and aren't interested. Um, it just says right now, A, you're doing a good job? I like to think that. And then B, it's just, there's not that topic on the agenda that they must be here for. I think too, for me, part of the pandemic showed us that, um, there's, there's kind of a new current in the way people look at attending both work and meetings. And maintaining a family balance and having some meetings take place over the Webex or Zoom or whatever. So, um, I just, you know, I, I understand the dynamics for working with it. And you stated that, and I think even our past superintendent stated that there wasn't an interest of staff to wanna come in and do this. So it kinda just leaves the school district in a weird spot. But we did, you know, build it into a position that if we should need it, whether, let's say we decide not to do it. That it doesn't mean we won't ever do it, like so, if, so for instance, maybe we are gonna shut a school in the future or something or change attendance boundaries. Maybe you would say, okay, you know what, let's, we used to go to the sites and go site by site and do a roadshow kinda thing with that. But maybe times are different where you do hybrid, you do that and you, um, you do Zoom. So maybe you just Zoom when, you know, when it's, it's needed. So that's my opinion.
So, um, I don't use the parks all the time, but I'm glad they're there for when I do wanna use them. And likewise, I mean, I can understand having the Zoom stuff here, although I don't like the platform Zoom. I wish we use something different. Given how they mistreated all those protesters in China and gave up private details that they said weren't, were supposed to be private to the government. And let people get arrested and called off to black hole prisons. So I don't think they're a pretty evil company. But I'd like the idea of web access for people as a resource. Because we are a government agency funded by the public and the public should have access to us. And it is a modern time and I believe in the, the modern access to the thing. Six hundred dollars a month isn't terrible a price for offering that type of thing. Um, so yeah, I, I, um, but yeah, just, just like the parks, right? I, um, not everybody uses them all the time, but when we do use them, it's nice that they're there. It'd be annoying if we just took all the parks away. So if we took away access to the, um, Zoom meeting stuff, it would be annoying. Granted, there's an alternative. They could physically come here, but it's not a reality for everybody. So I like greater access, um, to government stuff. And a, a greater way that people can voice their opinions to their local government. Because that's an important part of how we do things. So I am in favor of keeping it. I just want us to look at a different company than Zoom. It's a, I don't like them. They're not good people.
All right, um, I like the aspect of having the public meeting. I, the only thing I don't like is, um, how we're kinda running it in terms of, um, I think we need to explore maybe getting a third party to run it. Um, cause running a meeting is there's the, there's the Zoom part where it's like, okay, you share a presentation, those kinds of things. But when there's technical issues, um, I feel like, um, you need someone that has that kinda background to troubleshoot those things. Um, and I think if we get a third party to, or at least get a quote to see what it would cost for a third party to run the meeting. You know, I feel that that would be more appropriate than having Rosanna run the meeting. Uh, because there's, there's more aspects. She's already, um, has tasks for the meeting regardless if we're doing Zoom or not. Um, so that's how I kinda feel about it. In terms of the platform, I'm open to other platforms. It's just a very popular platform. Uh, yeah, so, um, you know. Yeah, 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 exactly. So, um, you know, but yeah, for me, it is a modern time. It's you, you wanna have access. You know, just like the, the, your park, um, analogy, like you, you wanna have, um, cause there might be some times where people do wanna listen in. And even just the public in general, people that don't have any kids in the, in the district may wanna listen in on something, a particular topic. Um, so yeah, I would be, I like it. I wanna keep it. Um, I just wanna change who's actually running the meeting, um, in terms of like if getting a quote for a third party to do it. To see what that would look like. Um, any thoughts on a different employee versus a third party? Kind of note, there has been no interest for an employee doing the meeting.
What, like, like SCV TV, that kind of third?
No, just, just someone, um, I've looked at this in the past where they just, um, basically they run the Zoom like for us and, and, um, they just support. So basically all the Zoom stuff that Rosanna's doing, she wouldn't do any of that. Uh, if anything like that, something with the sound, they would fix that and just any, anything like that, something with the sound, they just would handle all that.
So they, they'd be here physically?
Yeah, they'd be here physically. I've seen it when, cause I've looked into this, um, where they've done it, basically they connect to their system, but, uh, they, they manage everything remotely. Uh, but I think for us, we would want it physical, cause anything could fail, like it could be something where they just reboot. Um, that's what I, I, but I don't know what that cost is. So, um, but yeah, I love having the Zooms. Go ahead. Not sure.
So I think we would have to explore if we did do a company or anybody else is exactly that, because that's where it was put there. Um, the, the, the companies that I am familiar with are remote. That's what. They come through. But I can take a look and explore and see if there's any companies that actually come out or if they're remote or how that would work if it was remote. Then that, that takes care of that part, that portion right there. Um, and then can just bring back quotes and see if that's something that everybody's interested in. And, um, yeah, we can move forward like that you'd like.
Well, I just wanna reiterate that if we are gonna continue with Zoom, that, you know, maybe once a month, uh, a notice goes out reminding parents, you know, these are our board meetings. You can log on. And, and if you can't be here physically, you can, uh, experience it virtually. And just make them aware, because I'm gonna be honest with you. When my daughter was in school, I didn't even realize or pay attention to when board meetings were. And I think that's a lot of parents that they don't think about it, that, you know, okay, you're welcome to come to our meeting and give input. And I want the parents to know that they, they count, they matter.
Um, so uh, this might be, I think I, I, in terms of like for the, the Rosanna's job description, does it have like a, something that says that she's able to run the Zoom meeting or?
Rosanna's job description, from my understanding, and she could probably knows it better than I do, but it says, support the board with virtual board meetings, Zoom. That's the, the verbiage. And that's all that it says in there. Support, and of course I wasn't here when that, those pieces were created. But support is very different than running the meeting. Support could be, yes, like she does support no matter what. She makes sure that everything's there. She gets the Zoom link on there for me for the board agenda. She does all of those pieces. She makes sure that everything's connected, everything's ready to go. She comes and she does all of those pieces. But running a meeting, now that's a whole different, that's that in a, in a job description. And Amanda, you can also correct me if I'm wrong. Putting, running a board meeting is very different, because that means that would be her sole responsibility really. Where she would be making sure everything's going on. There's, she's taking in, um, our participants and which she already does that. The, those pieces, but if we, when we did have comments, same thing, that was running. She was actually running that part. Where in her job description it says support. Support could mean many different things. I mean, we probably should have support in our job descriptions as well, because if needed, we would have to step up in support as well. So I think that if, when we get into the logistical pieces like that, her top description, it does not say run a board meeting with Zoom. Um, Rosanna, you can correct me if I am wrong. But I think that's the, the, the piece of it. And I think that's why they added it there, because it was to support those pieces. But from my understanding too, we did have our Super Business Services helping and supporting it as well with Rosanna. So I think there was multiple people running it at the same time. Now at times with Rosanna, she's helping us with the technology, the presentations, taking notes and monitoring the Zoom. Uh, I mean, it just, uh, myself, I would, I would think that that was a lot for me to do. And I'm just taking my notes as I'm moving forward on it. So that is my opinion on that.
So maybe Amanda, can you, is it just more in just interpretation or what, what, what do we do here?
I agree with Dr. Hernandez, the word support. We didn't use the word facilitate. That's probably the word we would have selected if the intent was for her to do one hundred percent of it. So to me, if I was to pick it up and knew nothing and interpret this with my HR hat on, I'd say support. That's kind of behind the scenes. That's not the main person. To me, I, I, the verb I wanna see is facilitate. Or lead.
So clarify for me two things. One, can people who are just virtually watching the meeting, how do they make their comments? Cause we don't take them now, right? They have to get them in before five o'clock or something on the day of a meeting?
Currently, yeah.
Okay, 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 so. And then two, how is it we can't nego, I, cause I'm assuming everybody's classified who could possibly even do it? How is it we couldn't say as a district to negotiate that? Um, with our staff, cause I know school districts do it. And so, so I. Of our school district. And how can we meet this need and negotiate with classified, how that, I mean, we would do something like that if we were gonna, I'll, I'll do something with teachers, so. Well, I, cause I'm only thinking we have a tech department.
And that was the original plan. When we, oh gosh, well over a year ago, um, looked into all of this, Ken McGaffey did reach out to his team overseeing the IT department. And from what I remember, no one was interested in, um, extra hourly and coming back and taking on this piece.
Yeah, and we, and we looked into it, uh, we looked into it again as well when we brought this up again and same thing. Um, so what, I think what Sue's talking though, could we sit down with the union group leaders and say, we need this position, we need this? How can we bring it into somebody's job description?
So if, exactly. So if either A, we were creating a new position or B, if we are, um, changing or adding to an existing job description, then yes, absolutely, we would need to partner with our union leadership.
Could we do like a stipend or something like that? How, how would that?
So on the classified side, typically we pay, um, their hourly rate.
Is it possible that no one wants to do it because they don't wanna be committed to twice a week, I mean, twice a month? Maybe we could have a few, uh, people.
The feedback that we received that I remember, um, was, it was less about the commitment and more about just not being, it's a lot of pressure. It's a lot of pressure. And in that moment, um, you have to do a lot of things. Yes, teachers did teach on Zoom for many, many years, or not many, many years, but for a long, it felt like many years. Um, however, I believe there's like multiple, and Rosanna can speak this better than I can, but there's multiple pieces of making sure this presentation is uploaded and ready to go and the audio works. I mean, we've even done interviews down here around the table and, um, run into some of the similar issues. Um, you have to have a really good understanding of the technology itself, not just Zoom, but the technology and the hardware. Um, and once again, not my area of expertise. Um, but it's not just the same as here now I'm sharing a screen or now I'm, I'm inter, or I'm allowing this person to come in. That when we were back in the day when, um, we were doing board meetings and we were all at home, Kate and I were run, helping to support the Zoom, right? And letting people in. But this is well beyond that level.
Question. If I recall correctly, if, if you have your meeting streamed on something and you loo- lose the stream, you have to close the meeting?
That is correct. That is what the, uh, new pieces of the Brown Act have said, that yes, that is correct. That is what the, uh, new pieces of the Brown Act have said, that yes, that is correct.
If there's technical issues, we have to stop the meeting until the.
And then you resume it when it's corrected, that's my understanding of the new pieces that have come through. Because then now, if you're saying you're giving access to one hundred percent, then you still need to give access one hundred percent. So that is also a concern, that if something, there was a technical difficulty, you stop completely. And I think we saw that at one of the board meetings that we were at, yeah, completely stopped, completely, no one could do anything until it. Revamped itself up. That just came through, right Sue? Yeah, that's very recent, very current. For the same reason, is that if we're saying we're giving access, then we have to give one hundred percent access. So if we were to have technical difficulties and it takes an hour to revamp. The meeting has stopped, and then we revamp it an hour.
And if you don't get it revamped, you reschedule it. So that's a, that's a big consideration too.
We would reschedule until it would happen again.
That only works one way though, so if we lose it, but not if someone out there loses it, right?
Oh, correct, we wouldn't know, uh, that's only if we, if we lose it, or there's been some times when we're not able to. Get things running and, and that's happened quite a few times here, we just continue on with our meeting, we start it, we continue on. But, um, moving forward now, just recently, we, we would have to stop it, we haven't had to yet, but. Prior to December, we did have to stop meetings or, and then just turn off the Zoom.
So, what is the board up saying, we have these different options, the, the, having an employee do it, that's the ideal for me, how I see it, but. Uh, that execution of that is the tricky part, um, having a third party do it. That's also not, I guess we have to see what that, what that looks like, how much that costs, um, is there a preference for either, you know, does any?
Well, I, I agree with you, I mean, my first preference would be to have one of our own do it. Second choice would be to have an outside person do it.
Since no one's volunteering to do it. Uh, how do we make that happen, uh, Amanda?
Well, we can't force someone to do it, it's not in their job description and it's after their hours, so the only way we'd be able to do it is voluntarily.
Okay, which we've already explored that option, right?
Correct.
Um, so I guess the only option is the third party seeing what is available to a third party.
Yeah, and if the board has any concern about shutting down, if we lose internet out to the community.
Like bylaws or anything like that, no?
You cannot, that's, that's new coming down from the Brown Act.
We could just keep one of our hubs, um, like a, a wifi hub as a backup, you know, like a, a resin thing, cause we can stream off of that for one time. In the event of a, uh, an outage, just say, look, plug it in as backup, and then go, I can turn on my cellphone and share.
Uh, mobile hotspot.
Oh, right. So that they can hear online, um, we could just consider keeping a, um. Like a wifi device, like a, not a wifi, but a cellular device, that we can just tether to the computer is a backup if our internet goes out. So that at worst will be down for five minutes while we're connecting to a different network to pop up. Multiple times at my office where I have to deal with things outside of, and I'm like, you know, I have redundant systems, right? So you have load balancing routers, so that you're using two different internet connections, and then I also have cellular backup.
And I think that's exactly where we would need that person to help and support, because the, like I said. That just those pieces, yeah, I wouldn't have thought of that.
So yeah, those, the devices he's talking about is called a MiFi, and, um, they have, uh, they have some now, they have an actual network connection. So literally, you just unplug it from the wall and plug it into that device, and then it, it's gonna get on the internet. So that'll be like, like Isaiah, he's one hundred percent right, that's what we would do.
For the, like a generator type, a generator experience.
Yeah, so, um, you would just do that and then just done.
Amanda, I have a question, when you reached out to get, uh, volunteers, was it only to classified or was to everyone?
It was only to classified, um, we felt that that was within the closest job description. Because of the additional pieces, um, it doesn't, they don't have it exactly in their job description, um, but it was to classified. I personally was not the one who reached out, but it was to classified.
Have you considered reaching out to maybe technical certificated? If there are any.
Well, we, we don't have technical certificated, is that right? So usually what you do is you stay within the jaws, job scope of who does that, you don't wanna take work from someone else to give it to someone else. So first, that's why you try the classified piece, and if it's not within their job description, it's also not within the job description. Of a certificated, because our certificated ran their meetings for their class, but this is for. It's different, so that, I mean, that is something that we could possibly explore, that same thing, we'd have to go back to our union leaders and. And talk to them about it, and that would be, that would be very different, so that's why we wouldn't have gone to a certificated, cause it's within this job scope of the classified.
And what about, uh, from the other districts, who's doing there, have we thought about asking them?
Um, so we don't, oh, you mean asking them to come and help us?
For example, the heart. Who runs theirs, it's a different day of the week, is it possible that they would be interested?
Don't know, Amanda, if we can hire someone.
I was gonna say, if they are employed by another district, um, we wouldn't. That, yeah, you can't be employed by, in, in, in that kinda case, they, I don't think we could do that.
Especially, and that's what.
Well, if they're contracted, and then if we were, if we were to create a contract with them, yes. But if they are a classified employee with Hart or with Saugus or whomever, I know Hart. They, I know they are one of the districts, I don't know who the other district, um, you mentioned was, you just said too. Um, but we would not, if they're on their payroll as a regular classified employee, we would not be able to do that.
Couldn't contract, so they can't do outside business, is what you're saying.
So, two more questions. There, so it's six hundred dollars a month, doesn't seem like anything, but if you times it by twelve. Comes up to about seven thousand two hundred, and that would be, see, I could do math, see, right, right there. So, um. Which in and of itself isn't a huge expense compared to what the district spends on bunches of stuff. However, when I think about some of the arts programs and instruments, that's where my head goes. Um, so my question, cause that would be primarily an internal employee. So I guess one of the factors we need to weigh too, is if you're looking at an outside contractor. That, what that cost is, cause if it's twenty five thousand dollars a year, that's pretty significant. So I think we need to bring all that kind of information back before we make a final decision about it.
Yeah, definitely, because yeah, you're, you're right, it's not gonna be six hundred dollars. And, uh, but we're in this predicament where, you know, like, like you said, you can't really force someone to do this, so, um.
I mean, we make our best effort to see if we can do it, and, and, cause we, obviously there's a belief on our board that our community should have access.
I, I feel like you could be, for the audio video piece, you could be trained on how, how it works and their workings of it. So to the very least, you know how to troubleshoot and all the different things that you need to do if there's an issue.
How many good high school student could do it?
Oh, no, definitely.
Right?
Oh, yeah, so. But that's.
So from what I'm hearing is that I'll bring back, um. How much it would cost for a third party and what type of equipment we would need for a third party. Um, as well exploring again our own personnel and seeing if there's anything that we can do on that end. And then bringing it back for decision, because what I'm hearing you say is you would like to continue to keep Zoom. So it's just making it, or virtual meetings, just making it work, how that's going to be the issue, okay?
Thank you.
All right. We're on that one enough, as, uh, item two, staff reports, student support services, presentation of overview of special education program.
All right. Good evening, governing board members, Dr. Hernandez, Executive Cabinet, thank you so much for this opportunity to present to you all this evening. I'm joined by our Assistant Director of Student Support Services, Mrs. Anna Walker. Special education is at the heart of the work that Anna does every day with our school teams on behalf of the New Hall School District students. So I thank her for being here this evening as well. Tonight, we're gonna share with you, um, an overview of how we're supporting students with special needs in the New Hall School District. Including how many students are currently served, at which school sites, in what type of programs, and with what service provision. We're also going to share with you our top five focus areas that are supporting our district's goal. To maintain high quality services for all students. And we're gonna give you that very brief overview this evening as a mid-year report, so I'm gonna turn it over to Anna at this time.
All right, so what everyone wants at the end of the day is to hear about special education, but here we go. All right, what is special education? Special education is defined by federal law, is specially designed instruction. At no cost to parents, that meets the unique needs of a child with a disability. Has to be individually developed to address a specific child's needs that exist in the educational setting that result from that disability. You're gonna see how many students that we have in the district in a moment, we have anywhere between eight hundred and nine hundred on any given day. So you can see how with that definition, how much work it is to figure out what specially designed instruction. Designed to, to meet the needs of the unique child is for every single student, sometimes one or two or three times a year. Okay, so it's a lot of work that we, goes into these IEPs. How does special education fit into the district's multi-tiered systems of support and education? There's a graph behind you, but basically special education, um, kind of exists at the top of the tiers. We have obviously core instruction for all students, that includes obviously everything with our, um. Differentiated instruction, our interventions, our enrichments, our universal screeners, this is our standards-based instruction. And then as we move up into tier two, we obviously have more targeted groups. Targeted interventions that are more small and more flexible with increased progress monitoring. And by the time we get up to, uh, tier three, we're really looking now at the smallest group of students that we serve. And now we're looking at very, very intense, sometimes even one-on-one specialized instruction that we're doing. And, um, with a variety of our special education staff, which we'll get into in a moment as well. I mentioned it before, it changes every single day. Uh, Gina and I can't wait to start our mornings by logging on to SACE and seeing how many students we have identified in the district. As of, when we pulled this number last week, it was sitting at about eight hundred and fifty. But in any given day, particularly in the spring, it tends to rise as we're doing more assessments, we range here in New Hall anywhere between eight hundred and nine hundred. Who are the students who have these IEPs who receive special education services? Behind you, you see raw numbers right here in the district of how many students kind of fall into those different, uh, disability categories. By far and large in New Hall, it is our students who are identified as having speech and language impairments. We call that SLI in Special Ed shorthand, but it's very closely followed by autism. Um, when I looked at that number, two hundred and thirteen students in our district, that's just shy of six thousand, that seems like a lot. But the CDC recently said we're looking at about one in forty-four children. It grows every single year, the incidence is increasing, so that's actually right about on the money, okay? Our third is specific learning disability, uh, these are our kids who have reading disability, perhaps, um. Learning difficulties with, it typically lands in reading, sometimes you see it in writing and math as well, and then the other disability, disability categories. Uh, dramatically fall in their rate of incidence. That's just another graph, kind of showing you where our percentages lie, and again, SLI in this district being our top category followed by autism. How do we serve these children in terms of the special education continuum in New Hall? I think you guys know this, but just a really quick recap, we obviously have general education at every school in the district. We have resource specialists at every school in the district at all ten of our sites. That is more the pull-out model where students are served, sometimes maybe it's thirty minutes or sixty minutes, ninety minutes a week, those kinds of decisions are made through the IEP team. But they live in general education and then are pulled out based on the IEP goals through the resource specialist program. Kind of moving up the continuum, we also have our mild to moderate special day classes, we have them at New Hall. Valencia Valley, at Meadows, at Wiley Canyon, and also at Oak Hills. So we have those hubs, so to speak, uh, each of those sites have either two or three classrooms serving cra- grades K through six. Kind of moving into more high needs, we have our regionalized special day class program. Uh, housed at Old Orchard, this is our program for students with emotional disturbances that we share with our self-up. And then, of course, we also have our moderate to severe special day class program, again, serving students K through six at Pico Canyon. All right, who are all of these people who run these programs and work with our students in these tier one, tier two, and tier three interventions? As you can see, we have a very rich staff, um, at the core of our SS, SS department are of course our education specialists. Those are our teachers who have our specialist, our special education teaching credentials. I heard some awful news today that that might be changing, but as of today, what we have is we have our mild to moderate. For those of you who don't know, I'm looking at Melanie over there, um. This used to be kind of our learning handicap credential, it morphed into mild to moderate, and it seems like it might be morphing into something else before long. Uh, we also have our early childhood education specialist, and of course, our moderate to severe education specialist. Working in those classrooms at Pico Canyon. We also, again, all of the, our other team members, we have occupational therapists, speech and language ethologists, we have a lot of those. Uh, school psychologists, physical therapists, vision specialists, and the list goes on and on and on. How do people get added, how do specialists, specialists like these get added to individual students' IEPs? That goes back to that first definition, it is all individually determined. Based on the unique needs that that child has in the school setting, resulting from that disability. So it's actually a pretty complex analysis that we go through in determining who these people serve through the IEP process. I just thought that was a great little picture, I don't know if you guys might, maybe wanna turn around and take, oh, you got your laptops in front of you, okay. That is our OT, uh, therapy room at Pico Canyon, we call it the OT room, but actually our APE specialist works out of that room as well. And I think you might see a friend there, Melanie, but, um, we're really proud of that room. That's one example, just to kind of give you guys a visual of what it looks like, okay, so we mentioned that OT. That would be one of our tier three interventions that's available through the IEP process, where kids are working on fine motor. Sensory processing skills, gross motor, and a whole host of other, um, fundamentals of, de- developmental learning targets. We have a little friend there who's enjoying his time in the, in the, I don't know, what do we call that thing, the Tumblr? But anyway, having a good time while he's working on his IEP goals. What are our focus areas in special education this year? Um, they are the identification process, we've talked about that a couple of times already, our interventions. Collaboration amongst all these team members, as you can imagine, it's a lot of work making sure that we all get into the same room to make sure that we have time to. Share information and talk about how we're gonna be doing our progress monitoring. Legal compliance, of course, because it's special ed, and also really looking at increasing parent partnerships has been another area of focus for us this year. The identification. So what have we been doing in the area of increasing our ability to identify accurately our students with disabilities? We have been, um, investing in additional assessment tools, particularly for our school psychologist. And our speech and language with all of this, we did a lot of work with our assessment, we call it our assessment inventory. We have a new checkout system, we invested a lot of materials, and there has been ongoing training all year long. Actually, a lot of it's been virtual, which has been helpful, um, to get people up to speed on these different assessment kits and tools that we have. Augmented and alternative communication assessment, that's a really long fancy term. For how we support communication with students who are non-verbal, are highly, highly limited in their ability to speak. So we do have a specialist in the district, and we have been piloting more collaborative models, like a trainer of trainer kind of, 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 uh, situation. Where they're going in and modeling how to assess and work with students who have AIC support, and that's been going really well. Professional development's been the big one, uh, especially with the school psychologists, we've been pulling them above and beyond. Just meeting, uh, through our job, oh, that sounds terrible, um, just meeting through our, sorry, is it okay if I talk right now? Oh, okay, here we go. I have feedback in my ears, cause I'm stuffed up, but anyway, we've been pulling the school psychologists on a regular basis to really dive into that eligibility. Um, we've been doing training with our, uh, administrators, and of course, continuing with our self a job alike meetings, and of course, our own district job alike meetings. Academic, social, emotional, and behavioral interventions, what have we been doing in this area? Um, Eric's, we definitely looked at trying to make Eric's more accessible to everyone, Eric's is a shorthand term. ERICS is a shorthand term for educationally-related intensive counseling services. It's our most highest-tier level of counseling supports for our students who require that, that level of support. And in the past, it was more of a pull-out level or a more itinerant model where people just kind of came site to site. And this year, we've been working more closely with our SALPA to have it be more accessible to our site staff as well. Behavior support services, we've rolled out a tiered model of training for our behavior aids that happens both on a weekly, a monthly, and a quarterly basis to ensure that that training with our behavior aids is happening on a regular basis. And more longer-term, big-picture professional development is happening on at least a monthly or quarterly basis as well. Social, emotional learning, tier one and tier two interventions is something that we are investing in. We're happy to have our counseling team with her tonight in support of some of our initiatives in this area. And then through our special education TOSA, Emily Frey, who we're happy to have in our department, also shoring up the curriculum, the intervention curriculum that we have available for our education specialists, so making sure that they have all of the steps to advance and the different curricular resources that they have, the actual materials in addition to the training, to make sure that they know how to use it. So by the end of this year, all of our ed specialists will have been shored up in that area. District and site collaboration. We want to thank the board for their support of letting us have our lead specialists. So in each of these areas, we have a lead school nurse, a lead OT, occupational therapist, a lead speech and language pathologist, a lead school counselor, and a lead school psychologist. It's really through them that we are able to to organize the job-alikes and the trainings that we do with these groups of employees. So they are meeting on a regular basis through the PLCs, through collabs, to make sure that we're doing ongoing training and just having that time to work with each other for planning. We have, like we mentioned earlier, we're also having the job-alikes through our department and special education collaboratives that we're hosting monthly at all school sites. What are those? That's when we're bringing a cross-group of professionals together, so that's your mixed team of your ed specialists, your speech pathologists, your school psychologists, to come together and work on scheduling IEP meetings and work on planning for progress monitoring the students who already are on IEPs. There's a picture of a special education collaborative. So at our special education hubs, these are happening actually sometimes more than monthly. I know at New Hall, they meet like more like twice a month. And again, that's where we just make sure that we're staying on calendar to make sure that all of our IEP meetings are getting done in timely manner and that we're planning, basically, we're planning how to troubleshoot any issues that come with our, come up with our students, identify needs for professional development, and all of those kinds of issues at the site level, that's where those are happening. Special education compliance, everyone's favorite topic. This month, we are auditing, thanks to the state of California, they're kind of shoving us to make sure that we get this done on time. But auditing our IEP implementation, what does that mean? This is a, what, this year, for the first time in a while, our ed specialists or education specialists are actually being asked to document their service logs, right, kind of the way we did back in COVID. And it's actually being audited by the state because they've set a target for students receiving at least ninety percent of the services that are on their IEPs. So that's something that's underway right now. We've been training our ed specialists on how to log it on our different online platforms, and our related service providers have been doing this for a while now on another platform called Paradigm. Through our office, and we're really, really, really fortunate to have a great clerical staff in our Student Support Services Department, we have really increased our monitoring of the timelines. As you know, with an IEP, they're due to be held on a certain day, reevaluations are due to be held on a certain day. And so there are regular emails now coming out from our department to the sites. This is late, you have these many coming up, and actually, our compliance with meeting timelines has dramatically increased. I want to give a shout out to some of our site principals as well because I've seen them in action at some of these special education collaboratives where they actually pull up our SACE, which is our online IEP system dashboard, and kind of go through which one's late. You click on it, it tells you who the student is, it tells you when it was due. So they've been doing a great job assisting us with our IEP compliance. Our procedural handbook is coming out in phases to make sure that all of our staff have a written guide to go to for questions about special education. And we have also done some training this year on facilitated IEPs, that's been going, that has been ongoing. And also, we've been doing some training with IEP essentials. So we've been training our school psychologists and our education specialists about, we're really just kind of picking a few core topics, we're calling them the essentials, and going over, for example, how to write IEP goals, or for example, how you write accommodations on an IEP. So some of the nuts and bolts, we've been doing this here as well. And finally, parent partnership, going to hand it off to Gina.
So this is fifth focus area is parent partnership. This is really critical. This is the work that our site teams do every day with our families, particularly around our children's individual education plans. Parents are part of that development process. We have a variety of ways of including parents in that partnership process. In addition to that, at the district level, we do have the Special Education Advisory Council. At the SALPA level, our Community Advisory Council. And this year, we've launched through a grant with CSUN, California State University at Northridge, a parent-partner, family-focused resource center. And what they have done that has been a great service in our community is they are training parents who are choosing to be those liaisons and supports to families of students with IEPs. They're training folks to come in and partner and support, not as an advocate at an IEP meeting, but in order to help that parent understand that world of special education, what their rights are, they have trained parent partners to do that work. So so far, out of our little New Hall School District, we've had seven families reach out to the Family Focus Resource Center. We're really happy to see that. We love that they're being trained at CSUN and kind of being that liaison. So they're pointing those families back to their support staff, either at the site or at the district level, to get their questions answered, so they can be more of a participant in that IEP process. We're really grateful for that partnership. And for those of you who haven't come to one of our Special Education Advisory Council meetings, I would invite you. It's taken a little bit of a shift this year from where it was in the past. This is a really special collaborative team. It is our specialists from our school sites partnering with our families and really trying to involve our parents in the process of what's happening, what are we moving on, what are our initiatives, making sure that parents of students with disabilities are included in the conversation. We've added a component of parent education this year. So half of the meetings are just business meetings on what's the district working on and how can we bring you along, get your input? And the other half of those meetings have been very little business and mostly parent education. So we've had a variety of topics this year, and we've surveyed in order to gather these topics. We will continue to survey to bring more topics to the CAC. These were our topics this year, and we have one more to go, sorry, two more to go. One is this Thursday. So we met with our families and had a presentation on understanding your child's IEP and walked them through that to give them that empowerment of knowing what to expect. We also presented to them on that matriculation process to middle school, which can be a very scary process for our families. They loved that. And by the way, these presentations have all been given by our team members, so we're really grateful to have our staff step up in this role. This week, we're meeting on visual supports for your students at home, particularly those children with autism. And then in April, we will be featuring our school psychologist and school counselor from Meadows Elementary will present a parent toolbox on parenting strategies. So parent workshops have been a real hit this year, and we're really excited to get more feedback to continue that work with our CAC. Lastly, I wanted to share with you a parent resource fair that we will have for the first time here in New Hall this year. This will be in honor of Autism Appreciation Month, which is recognized globally and nationally, the month of April. And we will host that at Oak Hills Elementary at 3:00 PM. You're all invited, our community is all invited, and we will have community members there on a panel to share some information about what resources are available to support our students and our parents. We welcome your questions and your comments.
Board, Donna.
I was just taking notes as you went through, and you mentioned that the amount of students being serviced changes, increasing, I'm assuming? And I was just wondering, how does that, or does that affect your staffing ratio? And is the staffing ratio for special ed aside from the district average staffing ratio?
Really great point. So staffing can change throughout a school year, dependent on the number of students that we're serving. For the most part, there's some wiggle room because there are not state caps, if you will, or maximum capacity in special education programs. These are really intended to be services. So there is one program that Education Code does guide around, and that is a resource specialist caseload would be capped, and the others are classrooms or services that are provided per the IEP. And so those can fluctuate.
So we never like deviate from the maximum, do we?
So for those resource programs, we would have to employ other staff to come in when those numbers go beyond that. And that's what we have done in our district, and that's done pretty much every year in most districts.
And you mentioned like students are being pulled out, does that mean they're actually being mainstreamed in regular classrooms and then pulled out for special? So the, when they're in the regular classroom, what is the staffing requirement?
I love this question, and it's not as easy of an answer as you would think. In special education, again, it is a service, and there are different service delivery models. In New Hall, for resource specialists, primarily, we have a to come out of general education and go to the resource room and receive that instruction based on those IEP goals in a small group, or sometimes even one-to-one. So most of that time is time out of the general education classroom for those resource specialists. That's the number that's capped at twenty-eight, they're not to go past twenty-eight at that site, so serving kids K through six. And they work really closely with the general education teacher and usually the site administrator to make sure that they're pulling them at the best times. Because as you can imagine, we don't want to be removing children from critical instruction to go receive their intervention in the resource room. So there's a lot of work that's done at the beginning of the year to kind of try to come up with those schedules. Mainstreaming is, is, is more typically, and I say more typically because in special education, we can customize and we can individualize anything. But more typically, when we're looking at mainstreaming, we're looking at students who are in that special day class program. That's their home room, so to speak, whereas our resource students, their home room is probably general, it is general education. And so for the students who are in that small special education classroom, that we call it SDC for short, special day class, but that's what it is, it's that special education home room classroom that's taught by that education specialist who has either that mild to moderate credential, or they have that moderate to severe credential. Through the IEP process, the parents will sit down with that IEP team and say, you know what? We have some goals here that would best be served in a gen ed setting. For example, a lot of times, it could be something like social skills. It could be something like a behavior goal. It could be something, it could be an academic goal, it really could be anything. But if the team decides that that goal is best met in that general education setting, that's what we more typically refer to as mainstreaming because the students send mainstream out of that special education setting back into general ed. Sometimes they go with support, such as an aide or maybe a behavior aid, sometimes they don't need the support at all. Again, all of those decisions are made individually on a case-by-case determination.
And in terms of the, you answered my question I was going to ask next. The kids who are mainstream, okay, so they're impacting that teacher. But if they need a one-on-one, they're going to have a one-on-one.
Correct, yeah, correct.
Okay. I have a few more questions.
Yeah.
So you mentioned that ninety percent is a goal for their services, why not one hundred percent?
So we didn't come up with that goal, I'll just say that right now, but yes.
So our goal is to implement a hundred percent of a student's IEP services. However, we know that children are absent, they miss school, they're sick. Those things happen. We also know that there are field trips and assemblies and special events that remove students from those specialized services. And those things happen, so we recognize that. But what the state is asking for a baseline this year is for each district, as they are audited, we'll it's a very complicated audit process that we're going to go through over these next three months, is to categorize those IEPs that we do examine and audit and decide whether or not that child received ninety-five to a hundred percent of his services, or ninety to ninety-five percent of his services. That's our clue that the state is most interested in that data in those two categories. What they've also informed us of is they will be looking at those districts where we have many students falling below that ninety percent bar in order to then determine what are the baselines in the districts within California, and where do they come in to support us? So we are going through our own informal audit of a small number of records to prepare for that. And, and we'll let you know how that goes, but we will weigh in with the state in June when we finalize that report.
Okay, one last question, I promise. So in terms of the parent education, I think that's so crucial. What about students that come in after you've, you know, made these workshops? Do they get access to that information? Do you track who has and hasn't participated so that they do get that information?
So this year, we've, again, this was new, the parent workshop component. So what we've been doing is posting those on our website under that Special Education Advisory Council area so that we point parents towards that, and site teams do as well, when parents need those resources. And then we just keep encouraging, we send out a slew of parent squares in advance of these parent workshops to get as many participants as we can. And then if somebody misses it, we reference that, our website.
So basically, you are tracking to know who doesn't get that information so that you can encourage them to get that information?
We, we don't track per se, but we love to see the families who do come to those meetings. We have representatives from all of the schools participating in these advisory meetings. And, and then we, of course, we all sign in when we're there for those meetings, and we have record of that. But of those, all of those children, of course, not all of their families attend these meetings, so.
So are you able to tell which parents are knowledgeable of this and those that aren't, based on the support that you get from them?
So really, our, our specialists at our school sites, all of those case managers would be the ones, honestly, that would be most aware of those families that are involved and participating. And then we ask our, we remind to please reach out and do that connection, you know, make those connections with their families, especially those parents who aren't participating.
Okay, thank you.
So just to tag on to one of Donna's questions about the audit piece, is the state dangling money in your face? Because the state is not, we all
Should just like shoot low, we might get a ground out of it.
Because historically, the state has been known to like not give all the funding over. And to me, to make you go through all this work, I mean, certainly, our students should be getting a hundred percent whatever they need. Even if they're absent, we, we get it to them at whatever points in time. But the state always has an ulterior motive in these types of things.
So, so where this is coming from, that's a great question, and we wondered the same thing. Where this points back to is actually, it's a lawsuit that Cal, the state of California was involved in about twenty-five years ago. This is one of the corrective actions of many corrective actions for our state. And so they do have to prove that there is a system for tracking the implementation of IEPs, is what that's called, and to ensure that they have a way to monitor their district. So this will be an annual activity for all districts to be completing, that's the news that we've been given so far, is to expect this every spring so that they can again prove to the federal government that they do have a system in place for ensuring this.
It's taken twenty-five years to implement this?
I, I think litigation just takes a long time to play out, is probably how that happened, so.
Entertaining, okay. My next question is, how did you hear about the Parent Partners Family Focus Resource Center at Cal State Northridge?
So our SALPA, our Special Education Local Plan, actually partnered with CSUN on that project, on that grant. So we were part of the planning organization and work that went into that. Our executive director, Tracy Peyton Perry, is a big advocate of parent partnerships, as are all of the directors in Santa Clarita Valley. So we actually, you know, entertained that idea, kind of hatched that plan, and then went out to make sure that that happened. It's just launched, it's been in motion for about a year. There's actually a brochure that now lives on our Santa Clarita Valley website at the SALPA site that walks parents through that process. So we're really proud of that effort this year. at the S L P site that walks parents through that process. So we're really proud of that effort this year.
Well, I'm always about parent family engagement, so I think it's all really, really good stuff. I had no idea the number of students who are um with special ed and so I am amazed because it's, it's a lot of kids.
We're bigger than any school.
What?
Like they're bigger than any single school.
Right? Well, and our, we have that many music students also. So that, that's, you know, those are couple of schools within each community, but thank you for all the hard work and to the counselors and all the staff, the psychs and behavior specialists and everybody, nurses. God bless you for all of that work and um it's very refreshing to hear what you're doing. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I had a question relating to the, the system that you're using. Is it like, is it software or just the methodology, methodology that you guys are using?
Are you referring to S A S?
Um, the, the, to track I E Ps, the system that.
Okay. S A S is an online uh portal. It's a website.
Okay.
It's actually hosted through the San Joaquin uh County Office of Education, I believe. Most California districts use it. L A U S D does not, which makes my life doing interim placements very fun because it's coming from a totally different database, but pretty much most of California uses it. It's fantastic. So if a student transfers, let's say they transfer from Saugus or let's say they transfer from Pasadena Unified, when they enroll in our district, I'm able to put in their birthday. I'm able to put in their name and all of their special education records are immediately accessible to us. That means any I E P that they've ever had, any assessment report that they've ever had. Um, it's all there. So it's an electronic database that, like I said, most, most districts in California are using. Um, it's where we go to write I E Ps. It's, it's loaded with um, it's loaded with a bunch of resources as well. Goldbanks, references, parent rights, all sorts of documents that our special education staff needs are housed there too. And it's really like, I would think that pretty much anyone in a department is probably on S A S on a daily basis. I mean, it's that critical to our work.
So it ha- it has the triggers for the um, the statutory uh.
Yeah, so you go on the dashboard, you just log in and it has this beautiful little pie chart in red, yellow and green, kind of like the California dashboard. And it flashes at you when you're late. I mean, it doesn't actually flash at you, but it changes color. And you're able to click on it and it gives you a daily breakdown of percentages. You click on it, it pulls up who's late, the student, the case manager, how many days it's late by. It gives you a countdown for upcoming meetings. I know that our um, our principals use it to help basically, you know, manage all of the I E Ps at their site to be like, okay, we have this minute coming up this month or they're on the calendar. So it's a plan, it's a, it's a really, really critical planning tool for our staff and our administrators as well, because it gives us all that information. And it's where we are now tracking the service minutes for this audit, at least as far as our education specialist. That's the hub we're using to go in and log how many minutes the child received on a, on a daily basis.
Were you logging that information before?
For the, for the education specialists, we weren't.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we were during COVID, but yeah. But everyone else has a different system, yeah.
Is it possible for someone to follow the cracks?
It, it is not.
What if they're coming from L A Unified?
So what happens is when a parent enters the, the school district, they let us know that the child has an I E P. And we have staff at the school site, really well-trained staff in our school offices that make that request when they aren't able to get their hands on that I E P. We have our office staff assist and then we have the parent assist us in getting those records. So we are always able to get those records and it's, it, the system works really well.
So the parents have to let you know though?
Parents are obligated to let us know that information. And if a teacher picks up on something that a parent hasn't informed us of, our classroom teachers are exceptional, all of our generalists, specialists, and they will let us know to go looking for those records, so.
Parent to get to notify us when they enroll, it's one of the questions on the enrollment documents that they have it, they. I would say nine times out of ten, they do provide it to us because they want those services. Occasionally, they don't. We find out very quickly because the office managers request paper copies of their files as well and it will, they will be found. It's usually the office managers, office managers who find it within like the first thirty days. So they'll notify us if a parent didn't notify us within thirty days. Worst case scenario, it gets lost in the paper record as well. It's picked up through Calpads. And so later on during the year, um, our district office here, when we're running our own internal checks and balances, it happened, I think, once last year where we find them that way because they have been reported to the state. So there's, there's like multiple checks and balances. So in the end, nobody gets lost, no.
So if a teacher picks up on something that hasn't been identified, how long does it take to take action and get that rectified?
So if it's an I E P that a teacher is suspicious of, they usually reach out to the parent, the office staff reaches out to the parents and then we're able to access those records really quickly.
Okay, thank you.
Question about how a child gets an I, I E P, what, what are the methods, um, the avenues that that happens?
That's a, that's a really um lengthy conversation, complicated, but, but the short, the short um answer to that is that we do have our student study teams that look at student data and work through that process of discussion and planning around interventions. And when there is suspicion of a disability, um, our assessment team is right there on campus. Our school psychologists take the lead in that work with our site administrators. And we pursue that assessment process with parents with their permission.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you, our pleasure.
All right, yo, some thought?
No questions, just thank you very much.
All right, very informative.
You're welcome.
All right. Staff reports, student support services, uh, remember that two, consideration of approving uh character strong cur- curriculum for counseling tier two solutions?
All right, good evening. So I'd like to introduce our school counselors who are here with me because this is a really, really important proposal this evening. The next two are. Um, so we have our school counselors, Crystal, David and Lorena, representing Old Orchard, Peachland and New Hall Elementary this evening. Thank you all for being here. So this first proposal, governing board members, is for the character strong curriculum for counseling tier two intervention. And in looking at our multi-tiered systems of support, we do have an incredible um uh curriculum for our tier one. Push in supports for students, that is with our second step curriculum that was adopted here in New Hall some time ago. And we use that very efficiently here in the district. Our school counselors apply that by pushing in to those general education classrooms, to all classrooms, to make sure that students are receiving those lessons on a very regular basis. What we found, the need was, when we are pulling small groups of at-risk students, that there wasn't an additional curriculum and we were using the same curriculum or having to create our own curriculum. And so the proposal is for that character strong, evidence-based curriculum to be applied across all of our schools for access by all of our school counselors for those tier two or what we call targeted interventions, where we're pulling small groups of students who are at risk.
Thank you. Four members' questions?
Well, I think it's great that you recognize that the kids are bored getting the same uh instruction for tier one and tier two. So um, I'm all for getting that extra curriculum for tier two. I make a motion to accept the, to approve. Chocolate?
To approve a contract for.
Character strong.
Second. Uh, we have a first and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And chair votes aye passes four oh. All right, thank you. Uh, remember that three um, consideration of approving a committee for children, second step early learning curriculum for tier one intervention?
Right, so this proposal is for expanding our second step curriculum down to our students in the universal pre-K program. There is an early learning component that has now been developed by Second Step that we didn't have access to. And now that we've become aware of it and our school counselors brought that to our attention. Um, they've been using the kindergarten materials for our littlest learners. And we recognize that the hands-on puppets and the materials that are in the learning, early learning kits are much more appropriate. And so we would request purchasing this for our U P K program.
All right, thank you. All right, go ahead.
Move to approve the committee for children, second step, early learning curriculum for tier one intervention.
My second.
Hey, we have a first and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye passes four oh. Thank you. Thanks for coming, all right. All right. All right, uh, section three, staff reports, business services. Remember that one, consideration of approving second interim budget report for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three.
I have um requested Mr. Vensco to do this report tonight. Normally I'd be up there with him, but he, this is his last night in the district. He, and you, as you know, he's gonna take a new position. And he probably needs a little practice at this, so. I'm gonna be here to support him if you guys have questions, but.
All right, so. And now I've already moved where, let's go back. This is a good start.
I just wanna say, while Kevin's getting it together, that this was a great report. I love the narrative. It looks nice and uh it just spelled it all out. It painted a picture and told a story. And I'm going to tell you, you don't know his nickname? Can I tell him your nickname? He's called Kev Dog around here.
Kev Dog?
Kev Dog. He has been working like a dog in the last couple of weeks to get this done. And that I wanna give him full credit. Um, even up to very late nights.
Yes.
And the system going down and problems with Lego, but he got it done. So he gets, he gets credit.
Well, thank you. And, and before I start, I just wanna say thank you to the board and to the staff of N S D um, for, for really treating me like a family member. Um, I've said it every time I say it to administrators. When I'm leaving, I really do feel like N S D has been a family, um, from, from the teachers to the classified staff, to the principals, to my staff. Um, I really do feel like it's a family. It is a very bittersweet. Um, you know, uh, time for me. I, I'm sad to leave, but uh, you know, my, my daughter's in the district, so you're not getting rid of me that easily, so. Um, and then I have another one coming up at, at, in a couple of years. So, so you, you'll, you'll see me around. Um, anyway, but thank you very much for the opportunity and uh, we'll definitely be around. So. All right, so tonight we are gonna be going through our second interim budget report. Tonight, we're gonna go through the assumptions that we use to come up with the second interim. We'll talk about the changes from the first interim. Uh, we'll look at the first interim versus second interim terms of numbers. Uh, we'll move on to our multi-year projections. And then we'll talk about what's coming forward, what's the next step considerations, and then we'll open it up to board questions. Okay, so with any budget, we base our budget on planning factors and these are the major planning factors that we've used for the second interim budget. What's important to remember just overall is that planning factors change constantly. Um, they're, they're wrong already. I'll just say that right now. I, I hate to say that, but we, they change so quickly and so rapidly. So I'll kind of walk through each little bit of the assumptions. Um, so our enrollment, we have updated our enrollment for the current year to fifty-nine sixty-seven. It was uh fifty-nine twenty-nine uh at first interim. So we're up about just under forty students. Um, and we've carried that over a- as we projected at first interim, we projected flat enrollment and that was due to outgoing classes being a little larger, but with the inclusion of TK, um, sorry, not TK, it's a universal pre-K. Um, being expanded by every quarter, every couple of years so that those higher outgoing classes are being offset by a new group of students that we hope to gain. So overall, we're projecting flat enrollment for the next three years. Uh, actual ADA, one, something to point out is that our, our ADA this year is definitely quite low compared to our historical. Uh, we usually were at about ninety-six percent. We're running just under ninety-four and a half. Actually, we're closer to like ninety-four point two, ninety-four point three. We stuck with ninety-four point five in this uh, in this period because typically enrollments goes down up until about January and then it starts, or sorry, not enrollment, um, attendance goes down till about January and then it kind of picks up a little bit and gives you a little bit. So that's why we stuck with ninety-four and a half. But and then the out years, we've used uh ninety-five percent. We were using ninety-five and a half at first interim, but we've lowered it to ninety-five just because we are not seeing that great uptick that we hope. We're not, we won't fully adjust that till maybe adopted budget. We might drop it even further if we don't see any big changes, so. Um, wanna point out funded ADA, so this is what we're actually funded on, not necessarily what our actual ADA was for the year. The state has come up with a new funding um mechanism in terms of counting or calculating ADA. Um, so even though uh our enrollment went up this year, we're actually still using our prior three-year ADA average. So that's why fifty-nine oh five is what you see or what we have for second interim and it was also for uh first interim. But we do get to use those new forty students that we count in, in the out years. So with those, that has increased us a slight bit, so that's good there. Cola, so as we pointed out this year, we've got, we had our cola of six point five six, but then an additional augmentation of six point seven. So a total of thirteen uh point two six percent for our cola this year. Uh, and then recently, the governor put out a budget that projects about eight point one three percent cola. Yes, that's great, but we've been told by a lot of our, you know, the main players in the finance area, school services, L A O, that that's an optimistic type of cola. While we would love to see that cola, I, it would just be very it, it would be very um optimistic we do get that, you know, and each percent of cola requires about six hundred thousand dollars of revenue for this district. So, you know, if that drops you know, one percent, that is six hundred thousand dollars. So anyways, we're gonna still use eight point one three because that's our um, that's the best knowledge that we have right now, but it'd just be something to think about as we go forward. I'll just kind of speed through the next couple, average unduplicated, that's what our supplemental funding is calculated off of. Lottery gets adjusted each year and we just use school services. They have a dartboard that tells us what they're projecting. And then our biggest piece of the assumptions is how many staff do we have? Our budget is comprised about eighty percent of people um, between salaries and benefits. So um, on our certificated side, we have thirty, three hundred and twenty-six F T E this year. Dropping by ten next year as COVID funding uh drop or is exhausted. And then we'll be gaining two in the third year out for how the cohorts of students land. So we, we're projecting even though the class sizes don't change and the enrollment's not changing, it's dependent on how the um the cohorts of grades as we project forward. Uh, classified is two hundred and fifty-four point three this year, uh, dropping down to two hundred and forty-four point nine um, in the next two years, again, as the COVID funding drops off. And then management confidential is uh staying flat through the next three years. Okay, so what does that mean? So the next piece um, is what's our major changes from first interim? So the numbers that you see up on top here, I'm gonna close this little guy here because he can't see. Um, the net changes in revenues is, is quite small overall. Um, and this is all unrestricted. These two numbers that you see up top here, they're both on the unrestricted side. You'll see that in the next slide, but um, our federal in, federal revenues, which would be on the restricted side, is just based on what are actual expenditures to date. We've just updated our projections. And then uh for federal revenues, typically it's, they match. So revenues, if revenues increase, your expenditures or your expenditures increase, your revenues increase because you um, you don't have a, a net increase or a, a net revenue of federal revenues. Um, other state revenues, so one of the big pieces that were, that we heard through the governor's budget is that the uh art, music and instruction block grant that they uh gave us at the beginning of the year, that was about three point six million. The governor has proposed to slash that budget pretty much in half. Um, which is a bummer, but um, we're, we're again, it's just a proposal at this point. The legislator has to go through it, but we've what we've done this time is we've just budgeted what we've received to date. So that's an increase, a decrease to our revenues about one point eight. And then, but we, on the flip side, we did actually pick up a new transportation funding um that was in the original budget, but we just recently got trailer bill language and all that other stuff in January and uh Donna will be bringing that plan. Um, and the next item, actually, so that's great. So we only have a, state revenues only decreased by about one point one. And then other local revenues, we've got a little more money in the bank and our interest rates, and I'm sure you've noticed it at your own banks, interest rates are up, so correspondingly, we've increased our interest revenues um on that side. Expenditures, this, the big one again is we've, we've incorporated the nine percent and the one percent off uh for the negotiated salary increases that were approved back in December. Um, so that increases there. And then supplies and services kind of switched between fours and fives. kind of switched between fours and fives, fours being the service, supplies and fives being services. They just kind of move around depending on how, what we use for the year. And then we did have some increases in sped services, meaning we, we've had to hire more outside agency staff. So our contracts with those, as we can't find fill positions. And then utilities, I'm sure you all saw your gas bill last month, and we are no we don't get any exceptions to that either. So we've increased our utility budgets for first, our second interim. So what does all this mean in terms of numbers? Okay, so as I mentioned, revenues just slightly up on the unrestricted and expenditures major down, so, or major up, which causes our net change from first interim to second interim to be actually in a deficit in, on the unrestricted side. With the beginning balance, that stays the same from first to second, and our ending balance, you'll see that net changing down to eleven point five for ending balance there. And then restricted, I, I don't the reason I want to point out that we break up unrestricted to restricted is unrestricted is just that, there isn't any restrictions. The district can use that for whatever purposes they deem per the board, per the administrative team. Restricted, those are just that. They are restricted to certain types of they're restricted to how you use them, when you can use them, et cetera. So it's important to know the kind of the difference between, because if you just put, look at it as a whole, you may not get the full picture. So again, on the restricted side, from first to second, just a little bit increase in revenue. And then our expenditures are increasing again due to the salaries for those staff that are funded out of the restricted fund. Funding. A part of the second interim is, is also looking at your out years. And why it's important to look at your out years is because when we file an interim report, we look at whether we're filing a positive qualified or negative certification. And positive meaning that we can meet our financial obligations for the current and next two years. So that's why we are required to look at not just the current year, but the next two years. And as I mentioned, New Hall is in a positive certification for the second interim, that meaning that we can meet our financial obligations. So on the unrestricted side, you see the revenues going up, and that's again due to that eight point one three percent cola. Again, I just, as I reiterate, that every percent that you see on the cola is about six hundred thousand dollars in our revenue. So if that drops two hundred, that, you know, two percent, we'll say now that revenue is down to the fifty-seven, you know, fifty-seven point million range. So we're right down close to that. You know, net even spending. So it looks good right now. I hope it stays that way. We're hoping, but that's kind of, that was the key at the, at the school services is, is hope, you know, hope that this stays that way, but so we are showing not deficit spending, we are showing a net surplus over the next two years and unrestricted. Bringing our ending balance in the final year to about fifteen point five. And then on the restricted side, you'll see a major decrease in revenues, and that's due to expiring COVID funds and those one-time funds that we're, we got this year and not in the out years. Okay, moving on to what it looks like as a whole. Something I kind of want to point out is the components of ending fund balance. So we show a total ending balance of thirty point two, thirty-four point nine, and thirty-eight point three in the next three fiscal years. However, we want to break out, you have to break out your ending balance by your non-spendable and restricted. So again, that's your those are all those COVID funds, title fund, while title funds don't have restricted balances, but all the state restricted funds. So that gets taken out of their, your available balance right off the top. Committed funds, as we mentioned before, we've put out a board resolution that commits any dollars above our six percent reserve for economic uncertainty. There's a multitude of uses for those funds, and you'll see those that fluctuate from, you know, six million to eight point five to ten as our ending balance increases. Again, the two, the signed is the additional three percent, and then our reserve is the three percent. The three percent is what the county requires, or not county, the state. State requires a three percent, and just to put into perspective, three percent doesn't even cover one month's payroll. So while three percent is the minimum, it sure shouldn't be a place to stay. You know, you want to be more than that. So what I, at the very bottom, you'll see our total available reserve percentage. So there's two different numbers there. There's the six percent, which is what we have assigned for reserve from economic uncertainty. That twelve point eight, the sixteen point two, and the eighteen point two also includes the committed funds amounts. So if any funds need to be used out of that committed that aren't in that board resolution, they would need, need to come back to the board to reallocate those funds in a different manner. So that's what we look like for our multi-year projection. So what's our next steps? What are we doing? So we're going to file our second interim report to Lego with positive certification, and then they will review it. Put out a letter to the board saying whether they agree or disagree, or what concerns they have. Then we will get to go to the governor's May revision, and this is the governor's chance to revise his proposals after he's had some negotiations with the legislature, and he'll come up with his thoughts and for the final state budget. And then in June, well, kind of while this is going on in May, we're going to be building our adopted budget and our estimated actuals for the year. So we'll incorporate any May revisions that, that comes out from the governor. And then we'll come to the board in June, that the first meeting for a hearing, and then the second meeting in June for the adoption. And then the state has to legally adopt their budget by the end of the year, otherwise they don't get in a paycheck. So they, they've, they haven't missed a budget deadline since they passed that law. Just, you know, fun fact. And then, as I mentioned, on, on the restricted side, we do see our, our restricted funding kind of going up, our restricted ending balance going up. And that's because of those one-time funds. We're in the process of working on those plans for the arts, music, and instructional block grant and emergency learning recovery block grant. And the reason we don't have a plan just quite yet for those is we got a lot of other one-time funding like Esser, one, two, and three gear, a whole bunch of COVID funding that's set to expire prior to these funds. And so as a fiscally prudent district, we're using those funds first, and we will kind of reevaluate our plans for the next outgoing years, and we'll talk about what's needed as we move forward. Again, we're going to be, we're looking at ways to expand the expanded learning opportunity program. And also that, as I mentioned, the U P K being expanded by quarter, additional students being admitted. So we'll have to be thinking about that as over the next couple of years. And with that, I will say, I would mic drop this, but I don't want to pay for it. So I won't, no, I'm kidding. But I appreciate it. Thank you very much for the time and open to questions.
Sue Solomon.
So, great report. And thank you, Business Services, for your efforts in keeping our district focused on how to wisely budget and then spend those dollars to improve services and instruction for our kids. Number one, first and foremost. My question, it, well, two things. One is, I know, you know, pandemic winding down governmentally. And on all levels. And the impacts of the pandemic have not gone away and probably won't for several years. So do you know of any advocacy going on at the state and or federal level to continue dollars to be fed into social, emotional learning? There are areas of, I mean, I see you have learning recovery, but I, what does that mean exactly? Where we've put our dollars that we've gotten to and have services, we've already, already do here. So we do pay capital advisors for, for doing advocacy for us. So I'd be interested in you know, maybe getting a report from them on what that looks like right now. And if you, and if you guys, Donna, Kevin, have you heard of anything going on? Did school services talk about it or any of that stuff?
They pointed out that this was the first budget since the pandemic started, that Governor Newsom did not bring out any additional COVID-type plans or special budgets. They called it a normal year budget. So in that respect, he didn't in January, and there may be some changes that he makes in May. That expanded learning block grant, what do you call it? L RAB, L RAB?
L Reggie. I call it Reggie.
That is a very large pot of money that can be used for all those kinds of things that were being funded before under the other funds. So there's still a, a big sum of money there that can go towards extra services. And that's a discussion that needs to happen now. But there's no new money at this point in time that's, that we're hearing about. That answer that?
That does.
Okay.
It kind of just leaves me where I was at, but yes, it does. And then the district's six percent. You know, we've had a conversation about upping it for a few years because six percent is double that of three. So what does that give you a month?
Just about.
And I, and you know, we're always under the assumption that we could get to two months or three months in an emergency. So when our new Business Services Director comes on, Assistant Superintendent, I would like to have us take a look at what it looks like to increase it, even if it's a one percent or a two percent. Just so we can, over time, get to a place where we have money for uncertainty.
Alright, that's an excellent, an excellent suggestion. And most elementary districts do have higher reserves than what this district currently has. I mean, I think the average in the state was around seventeen or eighteen percent.
About seventeen or eighteen.
But is it, but are they larger districts?
That's the average for elementary districts. So that encompasses every single elementary district. It's not just large or not. So, you know, the, the idea is to protect in those times like we had from two thousand five to two thousand eleven, where the state was cutting, 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 cutting.
Right.
So I think that's a great conversation to have with your next Assistant Superintendent, and if you did it incrementally. It, it's putting it into the savings account.
That's a very prudent point to make, because even in, you know, personal financial situations, we increased it from three to six months to nine to twelve months reserve. I just wanted to say, Kevin, thank you for explaining everything so clearly. I really enjoyed it and followed it and appreciate that.
You're very welcome. Thank you. None of that made any sense. You're going to need to stay here and practice a little bit more for you.
Yeah, alright, well.
Thank you very much, and thank you for all that you've done. Sad to see you go, but happy for your opportunities. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Move to approve the second interim budget report for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three.
Alright, we have a first and second. All those in favor say aye. And the chair vote type passes four oh. Thank you, Kevin.
Before Kevin sits down, I'd just like to say a few things about Kevin. So as you all know, tonight is Kevin's last night with us, and I'd like to thank Kevin for his dedication to the new whole school district. Kevin, I wish you the very best, luck in your new role of Assistant Superintendent of Business Services. I know you're going to be missed by many here, and we do appreciate all that you've done. So I have a little gift for you for your desk. So. Good luck, Kevin. And I know Amanda and Kate have a few words as well, so.
So Kevin has been in our district for ten plus years. Actually had to ask Dee Dee to send me your job history because I didn't know what I've topped in my head, because she's had quite a few different roles. I knew the tenure part, but he started off as a fiscal, fiscal services accountant in two thousand twelve. Two years later, he moved to business services coordinator. In two thousand eighteen, he went, became the Assistant Director of Business. And then most recently in two thousand twenty, he became the Director of Business and Fiscal Services. But that's his, his jobs or the, the many jobs he's had. What you might not know about Kevin is that, first of all, he's always good for a laugh. He never ever missed a dress-up day. He's actually, and, and Rosanna reminded me of this, he's the reigning champion of our dress-up days winners. So he, he has a long, long line, a long history of that. Let's see what else. He is an energy, energy drink fiend, never without his energy drink. A huge L A Kings fan. And we just thank you for your ten plus years of service, and don't be a stranger.
Just be strange.
And before you go, Kevin, I just want to add to what everybody has said here tonight. You know, there's been so much change at the district office, so much change in the business department over the last year, and you've really been the anchor. You've been the person that we've been able to go to and ask questions and have that, you know, you have that deep knowledge of, of the department. And as Amanda said, you're always great for a laugh. You've been so helpful in my new role. I know, I've known that I could always come to you with any questions, and you've been really responsive. So thank you for your really hard work, for everything you've done for our district and for our kids, and I wish you all the best.
And I'll say, Kevin, that I've been able to watch you grow as a business person all of these years. And I was especially impressed, like you really, you know, blossomed when Dio was here because he gave you that opportunity to present. And so we will miss you a lot here, but we know you're twenty minutes away. So, you know, we're always good for a cup of coffee somewhere.
I've been saying every day for the last two weeks, I have his number.
And I have Donna's number. I wish you the best of luck in your new position, and, you know, keep in touch. Let us know how it's going. Okay. Thank you.
Alright. Business Services Romanet Two, Review of Transportation Plan twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, and twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. It's, it's, it's off, Sue. It's, it's off Donna.
Okay, alright. Transportation Plan. As Kevin mentioned, this was new law this year. And we did not start to get information about it until about January. It is a AB eight one eighty-one, which takes effect in twenty-two, twenty-three to provide money towards our transportation expenses. It does not provide a hundred percent funding, though. But through the advocacy that has gone on for years, because the funding has been the same since the L C F F Local Control Funding Formula was generated in two thousand thirteen. The funding got frozen at that time at a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, which is only about ten percent of what this district pays for transportation services. And that was true across the state. So there was a lot of advocacy, especially a hard press in the last couple of years to get that raised. So this law provides in, now going forward, every year, up to sixty percent funding towards your transportation costs. And it will get cola also in the future years. So that's a good thing. So the estimate that we have right now is seven hundred and thirty-three thousand would be coming to the district. We will know for sure in June. That's when they're going to do their calculations, but we have the formula. And it will come in June for this year, and we did include it in the second interim budget because it's, it's for sure now. But here's the stipulation for this money, and this will get audited. The district has to have a transportation plan, and this is going to be a new annual requirement. This first plan has to be adopted by the board on April first, and then every year after, it would be adopted on April first. This first plan, there's a couple of key points. Number one is getting stakeholder input, which requires staff, administrators, teachers were involved. Our transportation provider, the Air Quality Management District I reached out to. We got input through, from parents, but through the, the offices. We, I'll explain that. And then in this process, to come up with this plan, we really worked a lot with STORE Transportation. They are our current provider to document what do we currently do? How does this work? So you have to describe your current year program, and then in this first plan, we're also going to be talking about, well, what's going to happen next year? And then every year thereafter, you'd be updating it. The ed code section, I, I did put in the document, the plan, you could read it, but it basically says you have to describe how you're going to provide service to your pupils, how you're going to prioritize services for TK kindergarten and any grades one to six. And then they have a couple of other categories, special education, low, low-income students, and homeless youth are also called out. It doesn't define prioritize. And it doesn't say that you have to do anything different. It just says, describe what you're doing. So the major elements will be a description of the services for pupils. Like I mentioned, disabilities, homeless children are called out. A description how unduplicated pupils can access home to school transportation at no cost to the pupils. We don't charge, so that's not an issue. The plan should be developed in consultation, like I said, with many stakeholder groups. Governing, and we also had a board member. Thank you, Sue Solomon, for being on that Zoom call. Um, this first plan that I'm bringing you tonight, uh I want to go through what the major elements were that were discussed. This is draft at this point. It would be brought back on the twenty-eighth for final approval. So if the board has questions or input to it, or you know, any other suggestions they want to see, that's the purpose of bringing it to you tonight to get your input. Uh, I included in the PowerPoint the calculation. It basically will take what was actually spent. If we were to budget uh buy a new bus, that would be taken out of the calculation. So capital expenses don't count towards this. If we were paying another a, agency to run the, not, not the contractor, but if we were paying another agency to uh provide services, that would be taken out. So then you come down to the sixty percent number of our total transportation expenses. You have to take out the hundred and fifty-nine thousand. They do fund us in in our funding control formula. And then you get to the seven hundred and thirty-three. That would be new additional dollars. Okay, so a lot of um research on what we currently do. And store transportation, they have a bus yard that is owned by the Hart district. This district has for years uh had a contract between Hart and, and the district to pay a lease fee to have our buses stored on that lot. Store transportation has had the contract for we're in the uh, this is the fourth year out of a potential five years that we can contract with the vendor without going out to a new contract. Um, they run the program. They hire the drivers, they train the drivers, they run the offices, they uh run the program for the, that the sites use to get co-curricular trips, field trips. Um, they work with the CHP to make sure our buses are uh up to date and certified. So they do all those steps. They have twelve route, the district has twelve routes each day. Eight of those routes are designated for special education pupils. And those, there are a total of ninety-seven students that are served. They, and those bus routes are uh developed in concept with the IEPs and for the needs of those students and special uh student support services manages those communications with store transportation when they need transportation services. Um, they have buses that are equipped to handle the equipments and the needs of those students. Four of the routes are general education pupils and that's three hundred and three students currently that are assigned to those bus routes. They serve their, they're coming, generally the pickups are over in the New Hall area, uh New Hall and Pine. Um uh, got it off the top of my head. Now I'm gonna blank on all the streets that they pick up, but over in the New Hall area, they're picking up students. They're taking some up to McGrath. And they have some pickups on the, on the hill going up to McGrath. And then they also pick up in those areas and they bring them over to Old Orchard, Peachland and Wiley Canyon. And those are students that are coming from areas generally the, the district. If you look at our boundaries, we have a section of New Hall that those students are assigned over to the Wiley Canyon School. And I don't know that boundary's been that way for a long time. So those four bus routes serve those students um on a daily basis. Okay. And like I mentioned, they also do the co-curricular trips. So uh based on feedback and discussion and ideas that I've been hearing over the last couple of months from many different sources and from the, the meeting that we had with stakeholders, there were a couple of key uh items. Number one, and this, this is, I think, key, is a safety enhancement to add a system to each bus where the bus driver will scan to know a kid is on the bus, scan when the student gets off the bus. This system, these systems have been around for a while, but for some reason, we haven't had it. But the ability's there and they store confirm, we can add it and it's not costly at all. And then it comes with an app. So office managers and school sites would have information about where the bus is, if it's running late, if they had problems. The parents can sign onto a parent app. So if the parent's standing at a bus stop and the bus isn't there, they will, they can say the bus is uh block away. They can see that on the app. Um, I first ran into this with my grandkids that had this system on their bus in New York and it was fabulous. And it was great to know that when I was standing waiting to pick up one of my grandkids, that that bus was ten minutes out or fifteen minutes out. So I couldn't believe that we didn't have it, to be honest with you. So the uh, I put the cost there, six hundred dollars per bus to mount the equipment and seven thousand two hundred a year to have the application. It's thirty dollars a month a bus. I mean, it's, that's a no-brainer to me. The school sites were really excited about this when they heard about it. The parents have been excited. And the other thing that's happening right now, to be honest with you, if a bus is late and you have one person in stores office trying to call fifty parents, it takes so long that those parents are not getting the information timely. And they're, then they're calling the school sites and the school sites are trying to call store. That's what's been happening. And this system can go in as soon as we say, yes, do it.
And you might increase ridership if parents have that ability to track their kids.
Yes, they will feel much safer.
Yeah.
They won't be, feel much more in control of the situation. So I'm excited about that. Um, if you can tell. Uh, all right. Number two was there's been a transition that occurred at the end of last year where Hart used to manage and be the middleman, the Hart district. They had staff that would manage the programs. They pulled themselves out. I wasn't here and I don't know all the conversations that occurred, but I do know that we've had to do some work, we, we on pull, making that pull out um uh so that everybody knows their new roles and that we have the website materials that reflect that relationship, that we have parent training materials. There's still some work to do, but Angie, this, my assistant has been working on making sure the website's correct. And we have a little bit of work to do with the Hart district to talk about what that contract looks like going forward. What they will be responsible for, what we will be responsible for. So that is information that I will be leaving with Eric. I've already started the conversation with Hart. Yeah.
Is store gonna lease the yards from them or are we to keep our?
Right now, Hart still owns it and I believe the direction it needs to go. And this is a conversation that is, needs to happen, is that we would still have a arrangement with Hart to lease the property for our buses. But store would be the contractor that we have the separate contract with that is running it. But, but there's, there's some.
There's an actual written contract and I mean, I, I don't know, like you're saying, who knows how that all went down? But there's language for termination in that contract, I would assume.
There is. And I've looked at the contract and I've put in a call over to my counterpart at Hart. There's uh further conversations that need to happen very soon.
Yeah.
That I want to bring to the board.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
So like I said, when I got started to get into the detail here, I um I said, okay, there's, there's more work to be done. And some of this I'm gonna get in place and some of it Eric will have to take over. Um, all right, the next two, this is coming from the it says prioritize in the law. So definition unclear. Prioritizing TK UPK. So coming up with some, you know, ideas here is just basically is because we're still in this transition where we're adding UPK classes each year. We're not necessarily at every site yet. So this is only putting in there as a may consider. That's what I would like the board to understand and weigh in on. But it's saying that if, if there's determination that there could be some bussing that could get students from a location to a UPK location, the district may consider that service and that could be just for the one year until UPK is at every site. So that was an idea to put in here to look at uh once we know the UPK locations, once you know the UPK counts and where they're at in the district. Store, we have twenty buses. Store could supply a bus and a route if the district went that way. Of course, it'd be a fee, right? And that's a cost that can be easily calculated because each bus has a daily rate. So and number four is along the same lines uh about considering a policy change that would let students, if they lived close to a bus stop and they wanted to open and roll, let's say from the New Hall area over to Wiley Canyon, there's a lot of interest. This is where this is coming from. There's a lot of parents that have gone into the school site saying, I want to open and roll, but I'm not in that little square area, but I, I, if I could get on the bus if there was space because I can't drive my child over to Wiley Canyon, could I ride the bus? That's what number four is addressing is the idea that the district may consider that policy to let a student ride a bus if there's a current bus route, if there's a current bus stop, and if there's room on that bus. So I'm bringing that to your attention for your consideration. Um, the last item for this plan is to determine the need to replace aging vehicles and look at potential grant funding. There is, uh, I don't know, I think it's like five billion dollars the federal government is putting out towards new buses. And there are four buses that store and uh their bus contractor have said, if you're going to consider replacing buses, these are the four we would recommend. Um, the grant would have to be applied for typically those grants paid like ninety percent of the cost of a new bus. So that's um, that's another thing to look at next year to, to decide if the district wants to get new buses. Three buses were purchased this year. They are electric buses and they are replacing the three oldest buses. They're not in service yet. Um, that's another conversation we have to have with Hart because EV charging stations have, have to go in. And Hart wants to have a conversation about that. Basically, who's gonna? Yeah.
When do we, when do we need to have these conversations?
Like I said, I've reached out and my counterpart was on vacation, but they know that I want to. And um, there's and I've reached out to um actually the, the, our attorney who helped draft the last agreement. So we've, we've started looking at that. But it, but soon before we end this year, we need to have a contract in place for next year.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
All right. So the next steps would be, like I said, tonight is a review. I'd love the feedback. Um, revisions to it can go into place before the twenty-eighth, but it does need to be adopted so that if we didn't adopt a plan, we would lose the seven hundred and thirty-three thousand. Um, it can be amended and changed along the way. Um, and every year it'd become an annual um step. So then in spring, summer, hopefully im- implement the ideas, the new tracking system, website updates and, and negotiate uh negotiate our new situation. I also think that when we have that negotiation, we need to talk to store about how they're managing our district as well. Just to make sure that we're um getting all the services that we need to get and who's doing it. Yes.
So if we implement this, we for sure get the seven hundred and thirty-three K?
Yes.
Okay, just two more questions.
Okay.
So you said we're in year four of the five maximum before we have to go out to other?
The, the original contract was written for three years with two automatic one-year renewals.
Okay.
So this would be year four. Going forward with store would be year five. Right now, store is very um embedded in this process for us and for Hart. Um, but the district went out to bid several times and that I know of in my history foresight did it one time and I can't remember the company that was doing it before that when I, when I worked here. So you, you can go out to bid and get new proposals and change your contractor. That can happen next year.
But it's not mandatory to change.
You usually want to go out to bid every five years. That's, that's a best practice.
Yeah, but again, you, so you go out to bid and they're the best thing. Can you stick with them?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And then my last question had to do with safety of the children. So I know you said they're getting trapped. They're going to be getting trapped. So do the parents wait with them until the bus comes?
Yes. Parents are supposed to be.
Every single parent or someone responsible is gonna wait there, see them on the bus. So, because the bus driver is gonna track them in, but how does he know he's tracking in everyone who should have been tracking in, tracked in? That was my question.
Well, you know, we've had some situations come up where, where we have school sites that, you know, they're, they're monitored who's getting off the bus and they know her, who's riding those buses. So if somebody's not on the bus that day, those school offices are on top of it. They'll call. You know. Okay, this came up and this is why having stakeholder involvement is good. One of I, there were SDC teachers that I asked to be on that committee. And they brought that point up. You have students that may not be able to wear a lanyard and keep track of it. So we talked about when this goes in investigating whether or not we'd apply something like if they had a wheelchair, put it on the wheelchair, put it on a backpack. Um, or the driver would have, if the driver only has four students on a particular SDC bus, the driver would have the code, QR code for each student. So we, we, we talked through that we would want to make sure we had a method that would work. And I can't say exactly what that is yet, but it, it was something I wrote into the plan to make sure that we look at that.
So, so.
From getting on from the school site, yes, but you know, when they pick them up, that they have to make sure they have a method there that works.
So you're saying they couldn't wear a lanyard or a bracelet or anything?
They may not be able to.
Yeah, no, see that.
Yeah. Yeah, it was brought up and it was a good point. I appreciated that teacher bring that up. Any other questions?
I saw, I think um, you know, a couple of years ago where um I like that, the, you know, the accounting of students coming on and, and getting off. I think they lost track of a kid and he was still on the bus. And it's like, you think like, how does that happen? But it, it happened clearly.
There was a case I know where a student fell asleep in the way back and the bus driver didn't know. And the bus went over to get maintenance and it was a, a while, not in our district.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
No, the district. Um, but yeah, it's very important.
You know, it's all good ideas. It's perfect.
I mean. He would have his device and he would know that. And also for field trips, you know, you, you could have a QR code for every student going on a field trip and you would know that. Yeah. Anyway. Any, any other, if you have any other ideas, but you know, tonight I'm just hoping to have it be close enough to ready to go. If you guys are okay with it.
No, it just uh sounds like we need to get our um, you know, with Hart district and kind of get that going.
Yes. Agreed. Okay.
We're good. All right, thank you.
Donna, I agree. It's a no-brainer. We will be bringing back the plan for adoption at the March twenty-eighth meeting.
Go ahead.
This law wrote in there that the district has to take at that meeting uh remote public comment if there is anybody who wants to make it. So you, it will need to, something will have to be set up and put in the agenda to say, if you want to make a comment, however, that's gonna work. It's in the law.
Sorry, the public comment, uh how right now you have to pretty much either do it before a certain time, right?
That's how it was done before. They had to notify the superintendent's office by a set time and then um Rosanna would have to elevate them on the zoom. Yeah.
All right. But, yeah, question. All right. All right. So we have a business services, Romanet three, um consideration of accepting a one-year renewal with Ida Bailey LLC to conduct the annual audit for the fiscal uh twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year.
I, I have um I'm recommending that we do hire Ida Bailey again. And you know, they've done a fine job. I negotiated a, a contract at a much lower rate than what they originally offered. And I was pleased that they worked with me on that. Um, the auditor would stay the same. He's still allowed to do the audit for another two years. And it's only a one-year renewal and we discussed this and I thought it gives the new superintendent a chance to come in and make a decision next year if he wants to then recommend a further renewals and maybe negotiate more. But um they're, they're a good firm. I'm recommending that the district hire them. There is an April one date that you are supposed to have your auditor on board and notify the county office. This allows us to meet that date.
So is it the recommendation um after this one-year contract to go to do like maybe RFP for, for the services? Okay.
Yeah.
Move to accept a one-year renewal with Ida Bailey LLC to conduct the annual audit for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three.
Yeah.
I second.
All right, we have a first and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair vote type passes four oh. Um, business services are a minute for consideration of approving proposal to have Ida Bailey conduct the final measure E Prop fifty-one audit uh required for a closeout.
There are, there are four projects that need to be closed out with uh OPSC, the Office of Public School Construction. Um, the fee is reasonable. They know the work. They did all the individual audits each year that the measure E was being spent. And um they're gonna be doing our audit on the other annual audit anyway. They, they'd be a good firm to do it. Other firms that charge up to twelve thousand five hundred to do these audits. And this process actually is a newer process. It used to be that OPSC would actually come into your district and audit them to close them out. But they decided a little while ago that they didn't want to do that anymore. So now they require this particular audit. So I'm recommending that we hire Ida Bailey to do all four and close the project out.
Is there a reason these projects weren't closed out sooner?
Two of them are overdue, two of them are not. You have one year after you file the final expenditure report to do them. So we're, we're still in line for two of them because I, I just signed the final audit report for the old orchard modernization when I got in the job. I was contacted by the consultant to say, hey, can you get this done? So um two of them are fine. Now there's no penalty for being late on the other two. That's, I verified that. But we do want to get it done. We don't want to wait any longer.
Okay. Move to approve the proposal to have Ida Bailey conduct the final measure E Prop fifty-one audit required for closeout.
Second. All right, we have first and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair vote type passes four oh. Um, Romanet five, uh consideration of approving resolution twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three dash seventeen for resignation of new representative to the Santa Clarita Valley School Food Services Agency Board of Directors. So it's, it's to add um Dr. Hernandez and um.
Eric?
Yeah. So it's, it's to add um Dr. Hernandez and um Eric, yeah, okay.
Move to approve the resolution twenty-two, twenty-three, seventeen for designation of new representatives to the Santa Clarita Food Services Agency Board of Directors, that being Dr. Letizia Hernandez and Eric Havenese again. Our Assistant Superintendent for Business to Come.
I second.
All right, we have a first and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair vote type passes four oh. Uh, one, section four, staff reports, curriculum and instructional services, consideration of approving or, or renta partnership proposal for a baseline system, systems uh study.
Right, so at our last board meeting, uh you saw Dr. Robin Veller LaSalle and Jenny Sosa came and spoke about the work that they've done in other districts. Um, and so the proposal I'm bringing forward tonight is around bringing them in for a um, as you see, a baseline system study, where they would be coming in, they'd be working with five particular schools um, in order to really do a deep dive of the data, it would include um classroom observations, um interviewing teachers and students, um other staff members to really get a clear profile of successful students, what are we doing in our district that's creating really successful students? And then how can we replicate that with our students who are not making the kind of accept uh growth that we would expect to see? Um, so that is what we are proposing tonight, the schools that they would be working with are four of our Title I schools where we have the highest number of our unduplicated students, so students who are English learners, low socioeconomic or foster youth. Um, and then also they would be looking at Valencia Valley, so it kind of as a representative of our, of our non-title schools where we have fewer of the, fewer of those students. And through that deep data dive, they're gonna be able to get kind of a trend line across our district and give us some really good information.
Okay, um, and the invoice is at phase one, do they, do you have a projection for another phase? Or how many phases?
So when they spoke last week, they talked about kind of it depends on the district, how many phases and how long they work with the district. Typically, they say anywhere from three to four years. This first phase is a really quick one, it's that baseline study. Um, what we would like to do or propose moving forward after we have this study is moving forward into phase two. And in that work would include uh an ad- administrative retreat, so we do uh every year we have an admin retreat where they would be bringing in that data. Um, Arinda would be bringing in that data and working with our districts um uh district inside administrators to really talk about what they found and their recommendations for next steps. It might also include um work sessions with classroom teachers where they're really looking at that data, celebrating the good work that's already happening and talking about what tweaks could happen in order to really accelerate learning for students where we're not seeing that growth that we would expect.
And did they indicate any like projections for, you know, ongoing phases, uh how costly it could get?
So the next phase typically runs about, we're working with, again, it's kind of by school. So if we continue to work by school, those five schools that we're talking about are four actually, cause we'd really be focusing in on those sites with the that high number of unduplicated students, would be about another hundred thousand dollars.
Per phase?
Total.
Oh, total.
Yeah, for that phase, mm-hmm, but for all of those schools.
But, but what I'm saying is that phase one, we know is a couple hundred, phase two, another hundred, would there be a phase three, four, five?
So that would really depend, phase two is the longest phase, and when I spoke with them, that's kind of the media's phase. So that's typically about a year long, where they're doing that deep dive work with the um district inside administrators. And then as needed with classroom teachers to do that work.
Thank you. So clarify for me, is it, so this one talks about two hundred and twenty-five thousand? Is it two hundred and twenty-five thousand plus a hundred thousand in the next phase?
Correct, next phase would be another hundred thousand.
Check it out, three hundred and thirty-five thousand. That, that's why I'm just wondering how many phases was the limit?
Yeah, um, how many, is there a phase, is there a such thing as a phase three?
There is, they, they've talked about different phases, but again, it really depends on the district, and we wouldn't really know until we got closer, deeper into first of all, this baseline study to see what kind of results that they find and what kind of recommendations they have. And then that phase two, when we're actually doing the work. Um, they've really um made comment, and I think they, they talked about this at the last meeting, we've already done a lot of work in our district, kind of set that foundation, our work with the five D, really understanding what good teaching and learning looks like. Um, our, our um sites doing a lot of work around professional learning communities, so really understanding how to look at data. So this is kind of helping us to fine tune and pull together the work that we've done already.
I guess for me, like the reason why it's important to know the phases, cause it's essentially like making a commitment, uh you know, cause why would you just do phase one?
Right, right, right.
You know, so it's, we're, we're essentially like committing to do three phases, cause um, you know, wanna see, see the process through. Um, my question is, have we ever went through this process with um, with any other programs, something like this? Have we ever done that in a district?
No.
Uh, to me, it seems like almost like an audit, uh, okay. If we haven't done-
We have not done anything like that's before.
So I would recommend too, as you go through these phases, when, when the district implemented cell, board members were invited to come and see, you know, sit in a session and or do a presentation at board level, so board, all board members can see where you're at.
Absolutely, so that's something we've already talked to them about, that that would be a piece of it, is bringing board members into that process, and also having regular board meetings where they're presenting and we're presenting kind of that, that progress that we're making along the way.
Great, so I guess we'll just have to see how it phases you as you go.
Yeah.
I think to be fully transparent, the, the way that they've laid it out, it does seem like it would be up to three years. Like that would be the, the best to make it really fully implemented and ensure that it works thoroughly. Cause we don't wanna do is sometimes take something on and then not fully implement it, and two years is not a long time. But three years, at least, it's, you can fully infiltrate it, new, new staff coming onboard. Um, the process being in place, which is really like they said, it's, it's not a program, it's system. And so, and one of the things that they did say is, in order for it to be functioning, working well, you have to have the pillars. And the board is definitely one of the pillars, and so this systems, these systems include the board. And that's, that's really critical to making anything function and work and successful.
So in terms of this project, we are looking at a budget of maybe three hun- four hundred thousand? Maybe and a half a million, one never knows. But investing in like, you know, hundreds of people and then thousands of students.
Right.
So.
It is, yeah, it is title one funding that we would be using for this.
And, and just to be clear, let's say they identify some things that other schools, you know, even though they're not title schools, they might have students that could benefit from those strategies. Would we have to go into more phasing or we could just adopt it over?
That's the beauty of this, so as we've been speaking with them about what this looks like, um, because we're using Title Ones, we're really focusing in on our Title One sites initially, but we can replicate every single thing that we're doing with our Title One sites at our non-title site. So that's really the beauty of it, is that they're helping us set up systems in place and recognizing what systems we do need to tweak and change. And then we can do that district-wide.
Yeah, I remember that presentation, she was a little hilarious, because um, the uh, the beauty of it is that you're not um, holding kids back from access to the le- lesson, but you're uh suplex, how do you say, supporting, not supplanting.
Correct, absolutely, it's really about accelerating student learning. That is really the focus, is how do we get um our students that we know, we're giving them lots and lots of support already, but how do we really accelerate their learning?
Move to approve the Arinda partnership proposal for baseline system study.
Second. All right, we have a first and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair vote type passes four oh. Right. Uh, staff report, uh, human resources, consideration of accepting the New Hall School District uh twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four contract proposal for New Hall Teachers Association.
All right, so last board meeting, NTA presented their sunshine, their proposals, and now it's our turn to present um our district proposals to sunshine for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. We are um very optimistic to enter into negotiations um in the spring and be ready for next year.
All right.
Move, got to move it?
Yep.
Yep, move to accept the New Hall School District twenty-three, twenty-four contract proposal for the New Hall Teachers Association.
Second, uh first and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And chair vote type passes four oh.
Thank you.
All right. Agenda item for upcoming meetings of, of the governing board. I think, I think, all right. All right, I adjourn this meeting, nine twenty-three.